Well, okay, it's welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. It's 7:30. I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for December 18, 2018 to order. So the first one is roll call.
Keewin?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Teal?
Here.
West?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
I think we are going to go and go ahead to the presentation, which is the, and skip the comments and come back to that later. Recognition of the Middleton firefighters' effort in the flood and active shooter events. And, Aaron, you want to start?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Aaron Harris, the chief of Middleton Fire.
Yes, my name's Aaron Harris. I'm the chief of the Middleton Fire Department. And on behalf of the 120 Middleton firefighters, rehab technicians, and fire corps personnel, we all thank you for this opportunity to present before you tonight. On September 19th, 2018, at 10:27 a.m., the MIFD was dispatched to Paradigm Software along with the Middleton Police Department, other police agencies, Middleton EMS, and surrounding medical personnel throughout Dane County. In a moment, I'm going to describe our response. But the trail to what would have ended up being a positive resolve really started years prior to that incident taking place. And that's through the joint training that we were provided by the Middleton Police Department and along with the Middleton EMS and continued training, joint training, with both those agencies, along with the Dane County Sheriff's Department, ATF, and beyond. Leading up to, and approximately a year and a half prior to this incident, we produced a training video on how we were going to react to and respond to such an incident. Obviously, this is training we needed to have, but hoped we'd never have to use. During an active shooter incident, there's what's termed a hot zone, a warm zone, and cold zone operations, better known as the investigative phase. Integrated warm zone training, as you see here, is where our firefighters integrate in with the medical personnel and the police personnel to efficiently and effectively gain access to victims and triage and transport those victims to the hospitals throughout Dane County. Again, training we hoped we'd never have to use and hope we never have to use again. As we all know, we were called upon to use that training on September 19th at Paradigm Software during their active shooter incident. Our personnel, also part of our training, is to establish and assist with establishing a perimeter, as you see here. These are images from the actual incident. This is at Demming Way and University Avenue or Highway 14 corridor. Our personnel staged at that location as all the workers from the facility, some took refuge behind these apparatus and fled to this area. But this ended up being a key movement to block incoming citizens and allowing us an easy way to get emergency personnel, medical personnel, to the scene, obviously, police personnel, to the scene, but keep an active corridor available so that we could transport quickly. We've learned a lot from incidents such as Columbine, where during the hot zone operation where we are in staging, oftentimes it would take too long to get to the victims. And so through integration and communication with Chief Falk in this particular situation, we're able to get word when they feel the act of shooting, the act of killing, has been neutralized, and we can advance forward under the safer environment that's provided by the police protection. Our personnel worked with EMS immediately. Some of our personnel, myself included, got in the back of an ambulance and advanced forward. And through our training, we knew we needed to find the police representative to establish what's called Unified Command. So we have police, EMS, and fire personnel together, those leaders, to make the decisions to carry out the rest of the incident through the warm zone. Shortly after arriving at this location you see here, we saw Chief Falk entering the scene, and we established that Unified Command structure within 10 minutes of an incident, of the incident taking place. Again, that in the past has taken sometimes hours, if not at all. So being able to get together, we can get the information that the police are receiving and vice versa, we're able to get to the victims, triage, treat them, and get to the hospital. Those efforts, those training efforts, I truly believe helped save lives. And again, thank you to Chief Falk and their staff for allowing us to partake in that training leading up to now, and our personnel, obviously, for partaking in that training. Our personnel assemble so that they can also assist EMS personnel with medical triage and transport. We provided CPR and assisted police with other tasks. But they're also assembled with all of our equipment to do forcible entry. The equipment that we use to force entry into structures that are on fire or into vehicles during a vehicle extrication are utilized during this phase, as people are trained to barricade themselves in place, and our personnel can make entry to overcome those barricades to get to the victims, again, to triage and transport. I want to thank, again, the Middleton Police Department and all the responding officers for their quick and decisive actions, for keeping all of us safe on the scene. Having that presence there allows us to focus in on our job. And again, through that training and protection, I think we came to a positive resolve. The Middleton EMS and all the outside medical responders for their life-saving efforts. Our associates, many of which are in the back of the room now, for their willingness to take calculated risks. This is not what they got into the fire service for. I did not get into the fire service to be responding to this, but unfortunately, in today's environment, we need to be prepared, and they were. How easy it would have been for them and us, all of us, to take "it will not, it's not going to happen here" type of an attitude. And our fire commission and you could have also taken that same approach for equipping us. Forty MIFD firefighters responded to this incident. There are communities across the country, Dane County, that don't even have 40 firefighters in their entire force to be able to respond. That is an incredible number, and their willingness to leave what they were doing and respond at a moment's notice to provide the care that they did. Again, we're here to thank you for equipping us to make it a safer environment for what we do. Again, thanking the police for providing us the training, the EMS for working side-by-side, again, to come to a positive resolve. I hope we never have to use this again, but through our after-action reviews, we will continue to train, to get better, and be prepared if such an incident were to come about in our community or beyond. Additional assistance was provided by our firefighters the following day. We provided escort for reunification of every Paradigm Software employee to get back into the building and to retrieve all their belongings and to help them get on their way. That's what we do. Comforting them, assisting them with whatever needs they needed as they went through the investigative stage, and to get their personal belongings. Upon completion, we were called upon by the Department of Criminal Investigations, and our personnel worked for a few hours to retrieve evidence. Again, with our equipment, and we were able to, as you can see here, gain access and extract evidence for that ongoing investigation. So again, thank you to the Middleton Police. Thank you, all of our firefighters and associates, for what you did, and thank you for equipping us and allowing us to be able to do that and putting your trust in us. Moving on, the flood incident. On August 20th and into the 21st of this year, we all know we had a pretty significant rain event. We started that day knowing we were going to have rain, so we do get prepared and mentally prepare our, to gather equipment. I had gathered ice rescue suits, water suits. In the event, we would have something. We generally do have people drive into deep water with a fraction of this event. I had approached some of our associates who were in-house training and doing their workouts and said, "This event looks like it's going to take over the resources of the city of Madison. Please be prepared to respond." And before I hit the bottom step of coming down out of our workout area, the page came out to respond into the city of Madison for trapped individuals inside of a vehicle that had driven into floodwaters. And our night began. And much of our responses took place here, in the industrial park corridor and beyond. To the west, into Cross Plains, Mazo Maney, city of Madison, town of Middleton. We responded and assisted to hundreds of individuals needing either assistance or simply being rescued from the environments they were found within. This is the first incident we responded to in the city of Madison, as individuals thought they could pass through floodwaters. We would no more than remove individuals from the water, and it seemed like three or four would drive back in. People were in a daze, I think. They were in shock that evening, as so were we. This individual, that individual, had a dog in his vehicle and was trapped on Highway 14. Eighty-five-year-old male needing to have surgery the next morning and drove off the roadway to be rescued. This incident here is much like a lot of what we saw that night. Our rescuers would go out in front, making sure we would not drive apparatus or step into manhole covers that had been removed from the floodwaters, to retrieve individuals such as this, who were in rising floodwaters, trapped inside of their vehicle. This is an 88-year-old female who was in Greenway Station with her daughters, shopping at the time of the incident. She did say in the end she enjoyed her first fire truck ride.
She was in pretty good shape.
She, along with over 20 other individuals, we assisted and rescued that evening, stayed overnight at the firehouse. They could not get out and back home to Spring Green, Wisconsin. So, again, it's these type of efforts that we thought maybe an hour or two into the night would end, and it didn't end for over 16 hours. Some of our members went, were awake for over 35 hours straight, were operating under these conditions for 16 hours straight, making multiple rescues. Some of the other conditions that we encountered, a sick child in desperate need of Children's Hospital. The family received a phone call and said, "Your child needs to be here immediately." They said, "It's, we can't get there, it's floodwaters." And they said, "They need to get here. Get as far as you can and call 911." We found them on the Belt Line, trapped behind floodwaters, not able to get to Children's Hospital. We took them onboard our apparatus and passed through the floodwaters throughout the city of Madison and onto Children's Hospital. Workers trapped within their businesses in the industrial park with no way out, standing at a doorway, glass doorway, looking out at us, there inside, and as the water was going up, nearing their heads, and could not find their way out of the building. We were able to force entry and extract those individuals as well. A structure fire in Cross Plains. In the midst of all of this, somebody's worst nightmare, their house is struck by lightning, and our personnel were first to arrive on scene. During that incident, floodwaters came through the woods and overtook our apparatus and our personnel and all the equipment that was being utilized. Again, our firefighters, putting their lives on the line is one thing, to fight a fire, but then to throw a flood at them on top of it and torrent waters is another. Hazmat response for a jet fuel leak, jet fuel tanks at the airport. A lithium hazmat explosion at, in the industrial park as well, that went ongoing for two weeks. Our personnel, again, worked unselfishly for over 16 hours, some of them for being awake for over 35 hours straight. This particular incident is difficult to discuss, but I think it's definitely noteworthy and should be recognized. And some of those individuals that are here today, if you want to step forward and explain what took place here, please do so. This is at the entry to Costco. How often do we all go through that area safely and effectively? This vehicle, that front tire, is on a curb and was caught and pushed into that area, and on the other side of it is, was torrent water that went under multiple bridges, as you may know, being familiar with that area. Just before this, they were calling 911. We were being dispatched to this, along with all of the other incidents that were taking place. And they came upon, the rescuers came upon this vehicle, which initially started further up Demming Way. Individual drove into floodwaters, was overtaken, and they found him trapped inside and not able to swim. They forced entry through the back window, pulling him out of the back window and dragging him to safety. While working on this incident, that car was being pushed into our rescuers by the torrent water and knew that that vehicle was going to overtake their position, and they only had so much time. The mother of two young children were inside of this vehicle, and the water was over the doorwell. And as one firefighter explained to me, Captain King, before we came here, as he approached that vehicle, he was working against forces he had never felt in his life and scared. The mother and two children, their only choice, their only possible way out of that environment was to take refuge on the roof of the vehicle. You about imagine what a mother feels like, pretty hopeless, holding on to two very young children. And another individual from Costco came out to try to assist them and rescue them and was also taken over by the water. And he too took refuge on top of the vehicle. So we had four individuals trapped on top of this vehicle, about to be pushed into water that was going to go under a bridge, and we can all about imagine the outcome of that. Our firefighters made a quick decision to make entry in, tie off a safety line, which was left there that evening because it was too dangerous to retrieve. They simply cut the rope and turned around, and the victims were gone. They took, they got them to safety and had to get to higher ground and go on to the next incident. It was one call after another after another. As soon as you finished one rescue, you went on to another, all night long. Thankfully, that family came to the station for a visit and wanted to meet the people that rescued them. Those individuals, can you please raise your hand? Thank you. Again, like I said, we had several people, the Red Cross dropped off cots, so we were prepared for victims to be able to stay in the station. Had a mother who was dropping off her daughter to school at the UW, sleeping there on the couch. Another individual was rescued from his vehicle, sleeping on another couch. Everywhere you look within our station, wherever you had a chair, a bed, a couch, there was people sleeping because they could not get home. Huge thank you to outside agencies. These individuals actually came here from Beloit for their Swift Water Rescue Team to assist in these operations. McFarland, Cross Plains, Maple Bluff, Sun Prairie, city of Madison. There was a lot of people who came to the rescue, and once done here, they had to go on to other areas to assist as well. Sun Prairie, as you know, through the tragedy that took place there this past year, we sent and staffed their station for the following days past that incident so they could get their feet under them and be prepared to safely respond. They returned that favor by staying here for two days straight and said they would not go home until I said we were ready. So thank you to them as well. Our efforts went beyond just the city of Middleton. We went on to other areas also for drone support. This is along the Mississippi River near Stoddard, Wisconsin, as they were struck, hit by additional flooding in days passing our incident. So again, the, our personnel, equipment, drones were able to respond. We provided assistance to the city of Middleton and others so that, for doing flood assessment and providing our certified drone pilots to do so. Again, 36 Middleton firefighter associates, rehab technicians, fire corps personnel responded to this incident. Again, there's communities that don't even have 36 people to call upon, and we had 36 dropping what they had to do and unselfishly spending the next two days going out and assisting those we are entrusted to help. Again, we're here to thank you. If, when we, several years ago, asked for ice-water rescue suits, if you said no, people would be dead. That's pretty clear to us. So again, thank you. Thank you for putting your trust in us and allowing us to do what we do and equipping us to allow us to do what we do. It's an honor. Thank you.
Well, after this, there's not much you can add, but our fire department is the best in Wisconsin, as I have said in the past. They have done an amazing job, and on the behalf of the city of Middleton, as the mayor, I would say thank you, thank you, thank you for doing an outstanding job. Another big hand to them. Thank you again, Aaron. So we move on to the next item, the comments from citizens present. It's limited to three minutes. Anybody who wants to speak. Abby?
I was kind of hoping somebody else would come up and go first to follow that, but so I have been working with Allison Madison, who is the environmental studies teacher at Middleton High School. And her class has been working on researching the city's policies for renewable energy, and they've done a lot of really cool other sustainability-related projects, including a local chopped food challenge, and they created a whole cooking show and a video, and it's, it's really impressive, the curriculum that Allison has put together for her, her class. And I had the opportunity to go and meet with them about a month ago and talk with them a little bit further about the city's renewable energy goals. And her, her students are working on a range of projects, but there are two students in particular, Maya and Lydia, who are here tonight, and they would like to present as part of their class project some thoughts with the council about how the city can motivate citizens to work toward the city's renewable energy goals. So Maya and Lydia will both come up.
All right.
Oh, do you need the microphone? Thank you. Thank you. Just trying to get this set up here. So there is going to be a box that should pop up and have you run a file.
Sounds good.
And while we're waiting, I just want to say hello to Maya, who is also on our youth commission.
Oh, awesome.
Yay.
Yes. If you run the, of course, you know technology.
I really don't.
Look at that.
That's exciting. Okay, cool. Do you want to start us off?
So we've been working on basically the Middleton's 100% renewable energy goals, and we're focusing on how we can get citizens more involved because from personal experience at least, we haven't really learned much about it until we started learning about it in class, so.
So when we initially learned about the 100% renewable commitment, I was really impressed because Middleton is around the 70th city in the entire US to make the commitment and is only one of about 130 cities around the entire country that has made this commitment. So it's a really impressive thing that, I was surprised I didn't know about our city and even Madison as well. So we think it's very important to promote citizen awareness because a lot of young people who are really interested in the subject didn't know that this was happening. didn't know that this was happening right in their own community.
So, some things we've already done as a city listed here have definitely been important in bringing awareness to this. So, some of these examples are like water conservation programs we have, free paper shredding events, farmers markets, community gardens, the recycling center. And then there's a bunch of Earth Day events. But we think it's important that we have some more awareness spread because as a citizen, I wasn't made aware of this until we, once again, learned it in class.
So we decided that what we wanted to present to you guys was about how the problem is that the public is still largely unaware. And this matters because public support is very important because it can influence voluntary changes made by the public, which will eventually help Madison or Middleton reach their 2040 goal. And it's also a great chance to get youth involved, which gives power to the voice of the young students in Middleton, at the high school, at the middle school. And kind of being in this generation, it's a very, very big problem to people of our age. So it's a very great opportunity to get so many people involved that live in our community.
So here we have some examples that we found about how other cities with the same goals have been getting their own citizens involved. So the first example is Minneapolis. They have a lot of really good programs to get citizens involved. And I think one of their biggest things that is helping is their student advocacy groups. So I Matter and Sierra Club have campaign bases working with students in their city. And as you can see in the picture, it's a group of students. And so I think getting students involved is a really huge part in spreading awareness. Some other things they have are like their metro and transit bus, and then bicycle renting, car sharing programs. So stuff like that is super helpful in getting citizens involved.
Another city we looked at was also Boulder, which I thought was a great comparison considering it has kind of a similar size to Middleton and I guess the Madison area. So what I found that was really cool about Boulder is that they promote something called the Roadmap to Renewable Living for Actions with Impact. And this is actually spelled out right on their website. And this is really great because it addresses in specific how citizens can make changes and really easy, kind of in layman's terms, about how daily changes can kind of help further Boulder's commitment. They also have some partnerships with certain companies and organizations, one being Comfort 365, which it partners with them to provide residents with cleaner cooling and heating. And Energy Smart, which offers energy advisors to homes and individuals for personalized help on how they can reduce the use of non-renewable energy in their own home. They also have resources right on their website. That link to Go Boulder, which is showing multimodal ways of getting around so people are relying less on cars and more on public transit. They also have something called Elevations Energy Loans, which are low-interest loans for energy-efficient upgrades for all different things in people's lives that citizens can also access right on their website. And they also have rebate and grant programs for people that are interested in using solar energy in their own houses.
So we came up with some ideas that we could possibly bring to Middleton to spread awareness.
Sure. So we thought something important, as we've touched on, is education. And having somehow implementing, I think our class is a great start about showing what environmental kind of awareness looks like in your own community because we're very focused on what's happening in Wisconsin and Middleton in specific. So I think that idea should be promoted more within schools. Because I know when I was younger, especially middle school and elementary school, while we hadn't made this commitment, a lot of things that we were taught about MGENE was safety. But I think this is also a very important thing that MGENE is also very involved in and something that they can definitely get people involved with in schools as well.
Um, this one?
Yeah.
So some other ideas we thought were like ceremonies for stuff that's being built, I guess, to get citizens involved. So examples would be like groundbreaking for different things that are being built. For example, the food hall being built, like behind Fitzgerald's. So like things like that would be a really good opportunity to get citizens involved.
Also for ease of access, we definitely thought that it would be great to have really good internet resources for people to go to, just because I know people my age and of all ages at this point, if they have a question, the first thing they do is Google it. So that's how I got all this information about Boulder within like one click. So it's really easy for citizens to do that because a lot of people don't have the patience, unfortunately, to really look into it and try to go to different resources. So if it's all spelled out right online, it's a really easy and simple way to make sure that people have access to the information.
The next thing is like signs and campaigns. So some ideas would be putting signs out to spread awareness again to citizens. And then more of a campaign for the goals, I guess, just again to get citizens aware and involved. Here are some examples of the website. So it's relatively difficult to find the information about this. And this is kind of what we were saying when we want like easier internet access. Because like when you first Google the goals, this is kind of the stuff that comes out. And it's kind of difficult to find the information easily. This is a forty-seven page PDF. It's kind of hard to read.
Sure.
And then here are some ideas for signs that we could put up in public. I think it would be, we think it would be really cool to have stuff like this in downtown Middleton because people would be really willing to read stuff like this. And it would be a really easy way to get people aware of this. And we actually put up some ideas for where like these could go potentially because these have relatively high foot traffic. So places like by the Capital Brewery, there's a charge point station for electric vehicles. So if people are going to be charging their electrical, electric vehicles there, then they're going to be probably interested in reading about 100% renewable energy goals. And then same around the National Mustard Museum, a lot of people are walking around there. And Willie Street Co-op as well.
Another place that we thought might be a great place to put it is the Conservancy, just because that is kind of one of the crown jewels of Middleton that people here, regardless of age or who you are, just absolutely love that resource that we have here. And really appreciate how we value the, the nature that's in our community. So maybe putting some there as well.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maya, and thank you, Lydia. And thank you, Abby. Emily.
Hi, I'm taking my, my three minutes. I want to say a special thank you to the mayor who signed off on the Illegal Guns Proclamation in the last week or so. One thing I wanted to say, sorry, my name is Emily Kuhn. I live on Middleton Beach Road. I am a Moms Demand Action activist. And a lot of people actually ask me, what is this? And why are you a mom? And I'm like, well, because I am a mom and I care. But we are open to everybody. And we are growing nationally. I did join it after Sandy Hook, and we just had the six-year anniversary. So I was not an activist before then. Quietly supported cool things like what they're doing, you know, especially in high school and college. But when Sandy Hook happened, I had a newborn who was six weeks old, and I was rocking him. And I just cried. And I couldn't imagine sending him to school one day and having something like Sandy Hook happen. And watching it now, he's six, he's that age. So I pour my energy into helping moms. And Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America is a grassroots movement of Americans fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. Moms Demand Action campaigns for new and stronger solutions to lax gun laws and loopholes that jeopardize the safety of our families. And it has an established chapter in every state of the country. And it's along with Mayors Against Illegal Guns, which the mayor signed, Students Demand Action, and the Everytown Survivor Network. And they're the largest gun prevention organization in the country as part of Everytown, with more than five million supporters nationally. A lot of people don't realize that it's, it's that large. Specifically, the mayor signed against the illegal guns. And it says that thirty thousand Americans across the country are killed every year as a result of gun violence. I just sometimes don't realize that, even as an activist. Thirty thousand nationally. That's, that's, I think I read recently, that's more than car accidents, which is usually cited as the number one. Including twelve thousand who are murdered, destroying families and communities in big cities and small towns. And mayors feel they are duty-bound to do everything in their power to protect our residents, especially the children. So I thank you guys for that and your support. And to protect the children from harm and that there's no greater threat to public safety than the threat of illegal guns. And I know you heard earlier today from the fire, the fire chief and, and his team and how he was there when we had our active shooter about three months ago. And how he thanked the police chief and his, his team and the EMS. And I just want to second all of that. You guys do great work. And I know sometimes it's hard because there's more things that are happening in the community. But I was happy to see that bump stocks were signed as part of the Justice Department today. So every bit helps. And I appreciate all of the city's support in what we've done as a community. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anybody else wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting. And the next is the public hearing, it's beyond seven thirty-five. And this is the Death Store Doing Businesses. Death Store Distillery is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage license. They are located at two-two-two-zero Eagle Drive in Middleton. And their agent is Brian D. Allison from Madison. Anybody wants to speak? When not, Director of the Chamber.
Yeah, Middleton Chamber of Commerce, speaking in support of the beer license for Death Store will help them be a better destination, both for tourism and, you know, given the, the media they've had recently, you know, moving forward, this will just help support the business by allowing them to bring more people and they can't necessarily enjoy their spirits, but want to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the that public hearing, and we are going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
And while all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next one is Specialized Aviation Service Operations Agreement. And there's a motion to defer, so.
Move deferral.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of this motion to defer say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The item number two is the Task Order with Strand Associates for Tax Incumental District Theory Engineering Support Services.
Approval is recommended by Finance.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number three, engagement letter with Baker Tilly Westau Kraus for the Sewerage Study and Five-Year Financial Forecast.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Any questions or discussion other than bakery? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next one is licenses. This is, we had a public hearing for that. This is the Death Store Doing Businesses. Death Store Distillery is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage license. They are located at two-two-two-zero Eagle Drive, Middleton.
Move approval is recommended by LNO.
Second.
Okay. Yes.
Mike, how much, well, let me step back. Is there TIF money still associated with this facility?
Oh, no, there never was.
I thought they had something that was, we had some revenue bonds or something like that.
They had a loan through the Middleton Area Development Corporation, and they paid back that loan. Death Store we're talking about, right?
Right. I thought they had, I thought we had a TIF agreement with them for redoing that building.
It was just a loan from MADC. And they worked it through Starion Bank, and they paid it off.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to give fermented malt beverage, malt beverage license, Class B to Death Store, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. So the next item is again for deferral. This is the Capital Flight Lease Request for Undewalt Airport Property.
Second.
Did you say deferral, Howard?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Okay, the next one is the direction regarding two dwellers that responded to the request for proposals for the Palmetto Clark State Properties. Anybody wants to start?
I will.
I've got a question. Did we give you specific directions to basically redo the request for proposal?
No.
Then I would make a motion that we instruct city staff to redo the request for proposal with a matrix system of various items.
How do we decide what's on the matrix?
What?
How will we decide what's on the matrix?
I think we can discuss that and add it to the proposal. We need a second.
Okay, you did a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's have a discussion, so. So you want to start, Kathy? You want to know about the matrix?
Yeah, I know that Eileen, you said they had this for Cayuga. What were some of the items that you used for Cayuga?
I think we talked about the appropriateness of the land use, the effect of the TIF, what other TIF resources were being asked for, what the payback was, and what the long-term effect was for adjoining businesses, that type of thing. And it was a weighted matrix. So we could prepare something like that as well for this.
I looked at what Eileen had, I had some ideas too in this case, you know. It was different, it was, describe about the Cayuga, the land and all that stuff.
Well, that was a request for proposals for redevelopment of a three-block area. And the respondents, it was, they could either do one block, two blocks, or all three blocks. And we ended up having six different proposals. I believe four just had one or two blocks, and two had the entire area.
So city had bought that land?
This, oh, sure, I'm sorry, go back, yeah. The city bought about seven businesses and, and homes and relocated the individuals. And then, and one of them was the, or businesses, one was Middleton Ford, one was D-Car. There were a couple of homes. There was a tile, a tile place, a service person.
There was significant cleanup required at.
And we had some contamination, and we got a brownfields grant to do that.
So could we add cleanup of the contaminated site to this? Evaluation of the approaches.
And we can, yeah, we can look at all aspects of it. And the council can decide, oops. Council can decide, you know, what is important in terms of the weighted portions. Or each person can. Aesthetics is another one. The spin-off, I think, to adjacent properties or the effect of adjacent properties is as well. And long-term impact to the TIF.
And with Cayuga, was it staff that evaluated them solely?
No, it was not. It was plane commission. And I think the CDA did as well, I'd have to, it was twenty years ago, sorry.
Oh, come on.
But memories. What'd you say?
Give or take.
Give or take a year or two. And then it was the council ultimately who decided. But it just, it just quant, it helped to quantify it a little bit.
Could I mention though that it wasn't easy?
It wasn't easy, no.
It was, uh, uh, there was highly subjective views of the two proposals that it was boiled down to at, at that point. And it was very similar to the kind of decision that you were facing at the last meeting.
Yeah, Mike, I think the important thing is what was the information that you sought from the developers? And then how did you break that down? That's what we're interested.
Right. I'm just trying to say, even though there's a quantitative analysis,
It's still subjective.
It still comes down to a qualitative judgment
Right, that's true.
Of that quantitative analysis.
That's a good way to say it.
And there are some things that if you don't give us direction on are going to make it difficult for us to put together that matrix.
Well, I think an important part also is adding, you're talking about payback, which would be increase in increment. Also, how the city will be paid back. And there are different ways of doing that, so how we would rate those.
That's the central issue.
Well, not totally. There's uses and
It's a central issue of contention.
Well, uses are also an issue.
I'm talking about the council.
Other questions or comments?
And Kathy, did I answer your question?
Just a second.
So this would be re-releasing the RFP.
Right. And to do that, do we want to, to change the wording where it says should expect to to something different? I, I am willing to compromise on that. But I think we should have a fairly, um, quick payback of the funds.
So when you say quick, one year or two years or?
Well,
I, I think we need to let the developers come up with their proposal and then we evaluate those proposals.
Well, as you put in RFP, what do you want? You're not going to, how would you evaluate?
We need to get more people responding to the RFP. And if it's quickness on re- paying for the initial cost of the land, we've already done that experiment and we got two proposals. We'd like to get some more.
Right, but there's room between two-point-six upfront and
Some time.
Anything else, you know?
And so we evaluate what they come up with.
Susan, in inherent in your motion is, is there a suggestion to reject the two proposals that we currently have and issue a new RFP with matrix?
I could certainly see doing that, that that would be the fairest thing for all that.
And they could resubmit.
Yeah, the current of two proposals could be resubmitted. Or if they look at the RFP and decide they want to make some changes, resubmit.
I think if we could include that in the motion, it would give us more direction
Yes.
How to proceed. And, and when I say more direction too, we have tenants in the buildings. And I need to be able to say, you know, we can extend the leases through the end of this year perhaps, or nineteen, I mean. As we look at a different process, but I, that's why I'm, in part why I'm asking that question.
And I think also we need some feel for completion date, that type of thing. I know we discussed somebody
Not going to get any idea until we get the RFPs back and can open them. And then if they're, uh, developers that are wanting to use, uh, tax credits, there's that
I guess what I'm saying is that we would like them to
Describe their completion timeline?
Yeah, for the developers to give some idea of their completion timeline or as it was discussed, they simply buy the property and sit on it for five years.
I don't know anybody who's going to sit on it at two-point-six million dollars with the kind of rents that it's
That might be true, but it's a possibility. They can save, you know, at least address that question, how they address it.
Any other thoughts?
If, if we go down this path, um, I do want to see a, a very clear list of questions being asked. Whether we have weights associated with them or not, I don't know, but we, I think we need to, to be fair to any, um, developer, they need to kind of know what our intent is. And to just say, here's a list of, you know, submit, submit or resubmit, uh, a proposal and not have a target, we're all, we're all just basically saying, we'll wait and see what the best thing is. And we don't even, we haven't clearly defined what the best thing is for us. So absolutely, we need that list of questions. If we can add weights to them and say, this one's more important than another one, I think we need to do that too. And that's where we weren't two weeks ago and that's where we're not yet tonight. I'd like to see us get a lot closer to that if, if, if
So would you like staff to come up with an RFP and then we approve it?
I'd
Because otherwise, we're not, it's hard to give.
I understand, but it's eight-thirty and I'm willing to sit down and, and plug out some of the stuff right now. At least, at least get the la- the top, top five or top ten issues that need to be listed out. Um, if, if this is a path we're going to pursue.
I think I agree. Okay, so Larry has a suggestion that this is something which should be done by the committee. Maybe the plan commission or CDA, so maybe the plan commission. So do we want to refer it to the plan commission?
With all due respect to Larry, I think if, uh, any, I know, nobody says that and means it. With all, no, I mean, just in general, when you say all, with all due respect. Um, with all due respect, uh, I don't think this common council will be happy with another group deciding what's important. I think
I don't think that's what Larry means, but maybe, so I'm going to respect him, but but I think what he's saying is a committee should be developing that and bringing it to us to reflect on.
Yeah.
To start the process. So, so we have something to build on.
Right.
And that's really what a committee should be doing. It should be, we, we are not a committee.
Sure, and no, I, well
Just a reminder to Larry and everybody, the plan commission couldn't decide between these two proposals either. They both were, uh, rejected four to three.
So do we want to refer to the committee of the whole?
But I think we need to keep some of the options open so we get creativity for the developer.
Well, that's an option too, committee of the whole.
And that's, you know, if we're saying
That'd be a good work session.
We want you to have workforce housing as a requirement. That's going to limit this, because we wanted to get proposals for business opportunities, office opportunities, or housing. And if we put too many restrictions on it, we're not going to get that.
And can I just, one of the things I'd really like to do for, for the council is lay out the way that we did, um, use the Cayuga process because it was very similar in terms of the RFP and it did allow a lot of creativity. And we didn't necessarily put a lot of restrictions on it. It was, hey, here's some land, here's what we're, you know, we're hoping to see housing and, um, office and retail. Give us your best proposal and you can do one, two, or all three blocks. And we were very happy as a city, the council, plan commission, with the responses and then with the process. So I'd like to, you know, also lay that out because it wasn't as cut and dried as maybe you'd hoped. Again, because we were hoping that people would step up and be very creative. And I probably shouldn't have said subjective earlier. It's, it is, it's qualitative and it's looking at what's important to each person, um, regarding this important couple of acres.
Well, the way I see it, we already had RFP, two people did submit it. If we want to have some criteria, we should evaluate those two proposals as well. And, you know, or maybe once we have criteria, evaluate those and then maybe if we don't think they're appropriate, then we move forward. Joanna and then Dan.
So I, I, I think what I'm hearing is we do want to spend some time on this. I think the committee of the whole is the way to do that, which is a vehicle for the council to be a committee, where it's more informal and then we can, uh, sit down with staff and really hammer that out. So I would propose that we reject, you know, maybe this is kind of the compromise, uh, motion. Reject the current two proposals, um, ask staff to start developing an RFP and to bring those drafts to a committee of the whole meeting that we have in January.
And I would accept that.
Okay, so are you seconding that?
Well, she was the main motion and I was the secondor, so I'm, I'm refining the motion.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
As we move forward in this process and we take more time, I, I have a couple of questions. We, we took TIF money. At what point do we have to pay that back? At what point do we have to turn that into a loan? That's number one. Number two, if we go and we have to redo our leases and sign them for an extended period of time, how long do we sign them for? And if we have to turn it into a loan, how much the rents can't even come close to, to carrying that, I would imagine?
Dan, I reviewed that in the minutes, um, of the, the council's proceedings, putting together this history of the proj- project. And when, in the recorded minutes or the approved minutes, there was, uh, not a timeline set on what that, when that needs to be paid back, just that it needs to be paid back. Now, if it was the council's
Are there any statutory limits to how long we can
Twenty-thirty is the statutory.
So it can hang out there, Ellen?
Yeah.
Right.
Kathy, do you have anything to add? One thing which I remember from those meetings was that, uh, the council was clear that it will be paid back when we, when the purchase is made. That's one thing which I remember.
So is this on the motion? Because I don't know, that, that was a question, but let's make sure that we're talking about the motion that's in front of us.
We want to get as many proposals as possible. And I think we have to have multiple ways of paying back the purchase price. And I'm not in favor of it having to be upfront at the very beginning. That's why we didn't get
Okay, but just to clarify, that was not, as I understood, that was not your question, Dan. Your question was, uh, the, the council, the, the money that is paying, that paid for the property came from TID three. When does TID five need to pay back TID three? That was the question I was answering.
Right, and I'm answering Gurdieb's question. Gurdieb is trying to say that
I know, it's a different question. That's why I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear on that.
It's not relevant to the motion, because it's that, that discussion will take place at the committee of the whole.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're not restricting at this point repaying.
So Dan, to answer your question a little bit, I did ask, uh, you know, our finance director to look into that. How much money, how much that building is costing as such, the utilities and the management cost and all that stuff. I think that is right now about five thou- well, is that about five thousand or somewhere five to ten thousand dollars? And it's just breaking even right now? Is that what it is? And that doesn't include the interest cost or any of those things, so.
Yeah, the, it, currently the rents that have been coming in have been covering the costs for the property maintenance and utilities and other various costs. I think the question is going to be as leases are terminating, because we've had this end date in ti- in period, that's going to be harder for that to cover that. Part of that question would be if we're able to extend those leases and continue them forward. We have a, a meeting actually scheduled tomorrow to, to talk about the property. I'll see if we can get any updated information on the current plans of the tenants. But I think that's the piece that Mike's asking and, and staff's asking for some direction of we're going to continue to have leases to drop off and make it harder to cover those costs unless we go out there and try to extend or, or lease up the building again. The other question would be if this, um, loan continues for a longer period of time, what interest rate we want to set between the two different TIF districts?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just, just to clarify, is, is there an established interest rate between the two TIFs right now for this money? Because I don't know that that's figured into the break-even point, right? So what's, what, in my perspective, what we're not seeing is an implied return on this investment. The longer that it, this whole process plays out, right? There's a lost opportunity for investment. There's an investment risk here from TIF three. Right? TIF three has, has pushed out two-point-six and is getting absolutely nothing back on it. And the longer we delay on this, the more it costs the city in opportunity law, uh, a lost opportunity.
To answer your question, the resolution approving the advance did not set an interest rate. I think that that's a item that should be discussed and considered, especially if this loan is going to continue for a longer period of time. The resolution did specify that proceeds from the sale would be used to pay down the, the loan. I think the hope or, or the intent at the time of that resolution was that the city receives two-point-six million upfront. That repays the loan and it's closed out and there, it's not being held for a long period of time. If that circumstance is going to change, I think that's something where we're looking for direction on the couns- from the council.
So where would you start? I mean, so I would take a look and to see what type, what's our average, uh, return off of our TIF assets? To see what type of implied rate should be attached to this. Think in some of the other things that we've done, the other borrowings, it's been our, our marginal savings rate. So somewhere between the two, right? I, I think that we probably need some input from you as to what's the appropriate opportunity cost here? On top of whatever break-even analysis there is on operations, right? Because what's missing, what, what has, what nobody's been talking about here is the finance cost of this thing. Right, we've talked about the original intent of this thing was to flip this property so that we get out of the financing thing and make it strictly a TIF development deal. And, and our inability to reach a decision has caused the finance piece of this to just go crazy. Right, so
Well, it's not crazy.
No.
We want the best deal, okay? So that's what we're trying to do. I, I don't think you can say that by our inaction of trying to get a better deal that that's going to be a crazy thing for us to do. I think that's a very prudent thing for us to do. And I'm not foaming at the mouth, just so people know. Just to clarify.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So what's
Michelle, you want to read the motion?
With Joanna's amendment to it?
Yes.
Um, reject the current two proposals and ask staff to develop a new RFP process and bring it to the committee of the whole.
However, did, do, I did want to clarify, Joanna, you said January. Do you mean the one that we've already set for February second?
Do you want to do one before then?
I think we should have a separate one just on this.
I think we should too. Otherwise, we're going to be here all day February second.
We're going to be talking about a date tonight, so I can get the answers right away.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question.
After you vote on this.
Okay.
Develop a new RFP, but don't we want to develop the matrix also?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
And the matrix.
And the matrix. They are two separate things.
Yeah, I consider them one thing, but that's, yeah, yeah, two components of an RFP.
Okay, so you know what the motion is? You want to read it again, Michelle, just to make sure that everybody knows?
Reject the two current proposals and ask staff to develop a new RFP with weighted matrix and bring it to the committee of the whole. Date to be determined.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Let's have a, um, roll call vote. Let's start with, uh, we don't always want to start, let's start, Kathy, you want to start?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes, yes.
Oh, no, no, well, I mean, she's supposed to ask, but
I, okay, let's start over. Olsen?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
Tune?
No.
Burke?
No.
Teal?
No.
And West?
Okay, so the motion says five to three, so.
All right. Technically, three, five.
Three, five, so. Okay, so what's next now?
Included in that was a question about rejecting the proposals, but it wasn't specific to just rejecting the proposals. We tried this the last time. Is there any interest in deciding that?
Well, actually, we have a proposal here which meets more or less the requirements which we had put forward that, uh, you know, we had wanted two-point-six-three million dollars to be paid upfront and, uh, that was the basic requirement and then work out the other details. So I would, actually would So I would, actually would like, if somebody want to make a motion, that we should accept that proposal and move forward, so.
Mike, before we would reject those, we would have to know what we're going to do going forward, wouldn't we?
Which you also just defeated, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we, do we just, do we want to vote on this? I mean, on two that we have?
Let me ask you a different question. Through two weeks ago, both developers seem to have been modifying their proposals to meet some type of moving target that they may have inferred from this body. Are we at a point where there have been no more modifications for either one of these proposals, the developers?
We haven't asked for anything because we didn't have direction from the council as how to proceed. My understanding was that you got something from T-Wall Enterprises today in your trays at City Hall? And we, staff wasn't given that, so we haven't seen what's proposed.
So I don't think we could choose between either one.
Well, Emily and then anyone else, Emily, go ahead.
Thank you. Sort of echoing what she just said, I would, I would like a chance to review both proposals. I was, I was fairly happy with both of them, maybe not one was ideal over the other, but both of them had parts. If they've made modifications, I'm open to seeing them and thereby meeting the needs to move forward. As Mark was talking, that as we delay the process, it's costing the city. But I am open to seeing both of them. Thank you for sharing.
Might it be appropriate just to ask both developers to give us their best and final shot at whatever they are going to do? And then we just evaluate those two.
Okay, so is that your motion?
I'm just asking the question.
Okay.
And, and from a staff perspective, that would be great direction for us to have. That was actually what we had asked you for on December 4th, with a timeline that was proposed. We could push that timeline back and just proceed, on that basis, have a date by which the developers give us their best and final proposal, and then bring that back to the council.
I think I like-
So the issue then, at that point, is then the evaluative process. There are eight different opinions on how these, both these projects should be discussed and evaluated. And so maybe it's appropriate that we do a little bit of both, that we ask for a best and final, and then have a committee of the whole to establish what the criteria will be to evaluate the projects, right? And they don't, they can be exclusive processes. I don't know that it's required for us to tell the developer how we're going to score it. Right, that's really up to us. It's up to them to say, this is the, this is the best that I can come up with for this piece of land, for whatever entry level costs there are, and how I want to develop it. And, and I don't know that we should give guidance to a developer on what we're looking for, right? That's part of our process, not theirs.
Mark, why wouldn't we use the two proposals we have, draw the line in the sand, and this is what we have and this is-
Because they've been modified.
They've been modified.
I know they have been modified, but let's say what we have now, draw the line in the sand and-
Well, I think in terms of fairness, we have the new modification from Terrence, but we don't have Jacob's latest modification. We need to have a-
Does he have another modification?
We don't know.
I don't know that we've seen his last one.
We haven't seen his last one, and I think they both should have a fair chance with a set date.
We pick a date then, and we say, we want your-
Final proposition on this date.
Final proposal by this date, and then we'll make a decision.
I think we are making progress, and I agree with what has been said, so I think we should probably move forward with it. Yes, Emily, and then Rob, Robert.
I, I just want to say, I am impressed that the developers seem to have been listening for the past month. I know you were saying, you know, the matrix and, you know, how do we say this? But it does sound like that they've been listening, at least, I did a quick skim of the modifications that were there, and you can tell they're trying, and I give them, I give them an applause for that. You know, it can't be easy to try and appease eight different opinions. So I look forward to the final result for both.
Okay. So, Mike, do we need any motion, or we just?
Yeah, we do need a motion, right? So, so I'll propose, I don't have a calendar, what's this? Pardon me?
We have a fifth Tuesday on January 29th. However, if you wanted to do something in concert with the plan commission, that could be perhaps on January 22nd, which is a plan commission meeting night.
Plan commission needs to get involved in our own messes. I'm looking for more in terms of, to ask both developers to submit their best and final by January 15th. And then we have some council of the whole meeting to discuss the evaluation process. So.
January, Tuesday, January 29th is a fifth Tuesday of the month, so there's no meeting planned on that night.
Can I just ask a clarification? So we won't see the copies of the developers' best and final until after we develop the criteria? So we're not going to develop the criteria based on what we've read?
No, then-
Okay, so they have to be separated?
In fact, maybe we should do it the other way, is have it, our criteria meeting on the 29th, and have their best and finals due by February 10th.
Well, then, but then there, you didn't want them to know the criteria. So I'm just saying that we just separate those, you know, maybe you seal the proposals on the January date, we do our criteria, you open them after our criteria has been established.
That sounds fair, Joanna.
Seal the proposals, or seal our criteria, either one.
Well, yeah.
We have more problems sealing the criteria.
But if we're developing-
Well, we have to do the criteria in public, though, so that, the only thing that we can seal is the, is the proposals.
Right, and if we're developing criteria and already seeing the proposals, it's-
Then I would do it, then I would just extend the date to the 29th. So that we don't, or that's-
Do they have enough time?
Well, they've had it for a while, I'm thinking they're-
In terms of transparency, right? If we're going to evaluate the thing on the 29th, then it's only fair that they should be due on the 29th.
Okay.
It still doesn't get to my point, so we're not going to be, we should not view the proposals until after our criteria's been established and then-
That's fine, that's fine, but from a, from a process perspective, have them in by the 29th and sealed until after the criteria process is complete.
That's great, that's perfect.
Okay, so.
That's my motion.
We meet on the 29th?
Do you want me to do it over again?
Yeah, sure.
I second it.
Okay, any questions or comments now?
Are we going to meet on the 29th then?
Well, we will determine that date, Mike is working on that one, so.
On the whole or committee?
Committee of all.
Well, there's nothing to work on, is everyone free on the 29th?
I want a date tonight.
Okay, okay, so 29th.
While you're all here.
Okay. Okay, all right, 29th. Okay, I'll, you want to read the motion?
We'll have to find out if everybody's available.
Does everybody know they'll be available on January 29th?
I'll make it work.
I am, so Michelle, you want to read the motion?
You want me to try again?
Yeah, let's try this again. Ask both developers to submit final proposals by January 29th and seal until criteria process is complete.
Which will be established at the committee of the whole on the 29th.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion?
Not really.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Wow, unanimous. All right, that's progress.
Okay, we are moving on to, so somebody will communicate to the developers and let them know.
Did a draft on the 15th of the-
Okay, we are on to the ordinances. First reading, final action may be taken upon approval of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07.
Before you start that, I don't know that this addresses your other problem.
Correct, I, I'm glad you're bringing that up, Mark. I have a lot of problems, but that, it doesn't address the other problem I mentioned.
The lease problem.
The lease problem. Thank you.
So, as part of this, I think we should probably take steps to, at a minimum, see if the tenants are open to an extension of at least six months.
Yeah, they currently have leases through March.
I think it's only fair that we extend them for six months.
So until the end of June?
Maybe the end of-
September.
September.
Oh, six months from March, oh.
Why do you think?
Because we're not going to have a decision on the 29th, right? It'll probably take till some portion of February to come to some resolution as to who the winner is, and then we'll have to negotiate whatever TIF agreement there is, right? I think we'd probably be lucky if we had a TIF agreement in place by March 30th.
Okay.
So, I think it would only be prudent to ask these existing tenants if they would agree to an extension of six months.
I feel that's longer than it needs to be. I mean, if we're losing money on this as, month by month, and-
We're not, we're losing opportunity cost.
Yes, as they move.
Let's not go crazy. Six months sounds reasonable, till September. You're right.
Yeah, and you don't want to, but you don't want to jerk around with this.
I would, I would actually like to hear if Terrence Wall, who is here, has any-
Okay, go ahead.
I would like you to come up to the microphone, please.
Yeah, can you just clarify, like, how far, how fast you would start construction if you, if, if either developer would-
Right.
Would have a TIF in hand? Do you start day one, or do you start, like, one or two months out?
So, the best times for any developer is to start in the spring and finish in the spring, that's one timeframe. And really, the best time that we prefer is to start in October, because construction's taking, like, 13, 14 months these days, with all the delays and the construction shortage. So, an October 1 start is really important, because if we miss October, you miss the whole winter. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, so then, six months probably is okay then, all right?
That's reasonable, a six month?
Yeah, don't go past October 1st, I think, for any developer, is going to want to get in the ground.
Okay.
We want the end of September.
Thank you.
And that would, that would follow your line of thinking then, with your six months, Mark? Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that, do we need a motion, or?
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just that I would bring back then, on January 15th, an extension of the property manager agreement with Tim Carey, yeah, with the intent that we are extending leases, which we can do administratively, but it really helps that you, you provide that guidance.
Okay.
Only took us two months to think about it.
So all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Anyone opposed, so the motion passes now.
So now we are clear with this one, right? Anything else which is remaining, Mike, on this point?
Oh, that's, that covers it.
Now we move on to the ordinances. The first, this is the first reading, and the final action may be taken upon approval of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 of Middleton General ordinances. So the first one is an ordinance to extend no parking zone on Misty Valley Drive.
Have both approval and suspend the-
The rules. Okay, need a second.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yes.
All right.
I, I mean, it's, it's, it's only 20 feet, and it doesn't bother me, I, can somebody just help me understand, because the packet didn't necessarily tell me why the, the extra 20 feet of, uh-
Get Sean up here.
Or, or we can invite Sean up, sure.
Little movement, good for everybody.
Yeah, plainness.
The, the current parking prohibition comes from Belle Fontaine Boulevard-
Yes.
Almost to a driveway, which is a bit of a hairpin curve internally. And so, just for maneuvering room, that extra 20 feet would prohibit a vehicle from parking next to the driveway, which makes driveway access easier.
And you're happy, sorry, one more question, you're happy with where that line would be with a 20-foot move back?
It'll essentially get us back to the driveway.
Right next to somebody else's driveway, and it gets us out of the hairpin turn.
I think what happens is with a really large wheelbase vehicle like a fire truck, trying to get into this private drive, which is already a bit of a mess internally, and that's somebody else's doing, but this then gets that parked car away from the driveway, which opens up the street maneuvering.
That makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the, oh, Howard?
Yeah, that's my constituent that called me a couple of months ago, and, and I'm in the street in a snowstorm, and he said, gosh, you got to figure out some kind of a solution to this. So, this is what, simply some paint, and why?
Uh, it, it needs a signpost drilled in, so if we can get it before frost, that'd be good, otherwise, spring.
What about paint?
No, it's too late for paint. That's right, it's about to be covered by snow anyway, so.
No, it's not, we're not going to have it.
Yeah, let me write that down, January 15th, I'm hearing.
This also was a concern of the fire department, because they were, they could not comfortably feel that they could pick ladders around the corner if they had to, without driving across somebody's front yard to get in there, so.
On those days, they don't worry too much about grass, but, yeah.
No, that's, that's very helpful information, thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it's, we're just trying to help out a situation that's-
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next one is the ordinance to amend fee for single event mobile food establishment permit.
Recommend approval, or remove approval as recommended by LNO, and this is reducing the fee from $250 to $75.
Are you suspending the rules?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, need a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I do.
Oh, yes, Emily, go ahead.
I am so excited to see this, this was something I actually heard at Doors, so, thank you. I look forward to future food truck extravaganzas.
Robert?
Uh, the two questions I have is, do we have any information from other surrounding communities, what a typical fee is? And the second question, sort of non-related, I guess, is, do we expect a threefold or more increase in food trucks based on this reduction in charge fee?
Okay. This has been looked at multiple, multiple times by LNO. I don't remember all the details as it's gone through, but we've had request, Van, you might remember more of this than I do, but we've had requests, the latest one was from the fire department, so when they have one of their events, they can get a food truck to come in and serve, because they no longer want to fix food. So this would be for a single event. There's plenty of restrictions prohibiting food trucks near established working buildings, but this would be a food cart with a specific event associated with a special events permit.
So, Robert, I don't have the first ten-
I don't think it's going to be more food carts everywhere.
Okay, actually, that, that was, that was actually different than I thought this direction would go. I think this is a, this is a permanent, long-term change, right, to our, our fee structure? This isn't a one-time event.
Single event.
A one-time event.
Oh, am I, oh.
Oh, just one time, I'm like, still I want more food trucks.
And I'm just asking a stupid question, I, I removed my question. If this is a one-time event, then-
No, it's not a one-time event.
It's for all single events.
It's for a single event, it's not like you're going to have a food truck pay $75 and be able to park out front for the entire summer.
Right, single event associated with a special event permit.
Okay, no, then my question stands.
An example that could be Good Neighbor Fest.
Sure.
So they could have-
Just a one-event weekend permit for a mobile food cart.
I guess I was just, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Yeah, another example would be-
National mustard day.
Well, I'm thinking of something down at Lakeview Park that, say, the police department had national night out and wanted a food cart.
Another example.
And they would have a special events permit for that event occurring at Lakeview Park. And they could get a food cart or two at seven, seventy-five dollars.
It's also come up with corporate picnics.
Yeah, corporate picnic.
Uh, at, at shelters in the park. You know, can they have a, or a couple of mobile food carts at that event?
Thought we had that covered, if that the corporate event was paying for the food, they were covered under their special event permit, but if they were there selling, they would need their own permit.
That's what I thought, too.
Oh, you might be right, I, I, I might be grasping at straws on that one.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that's actually true.
So...
Go ahead.
But you bring up a valid point here, is if, if now it costs seventy-five bucks to get a, a, a food permit, a food truck permit, do we still retain the right to say no? I don't think that we want the food trucks to come to the Good Neighbor Fest, because there are all kinds of other vendors in, in that whole process that might not look favorably on the hot dog truck on the street while they're trying to sell food for their own charitable...
Well, Good Neighbor Fest has a special event permit for the use...
It has a special event permit.
Of that site, so I don't think anybody else could get a mobile food truck permit other than Good Neighbor Fest for those dates. Like, if Good Neighbor Fest itself wanted to have, uh, you know, a food cart.
Right, so there's nothing, so there wouldn't be any issue with a food truck getting a permit on that day or that weekend and parking on Clark Street.
Right, because they're not part of the special event permit.
They would, yeah.
The food cart is part of the special event permit granted to Good Neighbor Festival as a group. An independent food cart from Madison just couldn't randomly show up. They would have to have the special event permit, and we're not going to grant two special event permits for the same site on the same date. Is that what you're trying to get at? So, the food cart would have to be associated with Good Neighbor Fest.
Well, when you said, we're not going to grant two, what if Good Neighbor Fest wants several?
I'm talking two special event permits.
For the same property.
For the same property.
Got it, got it, okay.
Emily, you had a question?
But I'm not asking for the same property. I'm asking about a public street, which isn't covered by the Good Neighbor Fest.
We don't allow...
That wouldn't get a special event permit.
That wouldn't get a special event permit.
They do that, that's my point, is, is they would have, under that scenario, they'd have to get the full...
Yes.
Or whatever the fee is, I don't know.
Lots of...
The special event mobile cart permit would have to be under the umbrella of the special event permit.
Okay, Emily?
I would just keep a focus on Lakeview Park. There is, you, you can walk to food, but think of in summer, by the splash pad, special event, go with what she was saying. Stay away from that concept. Lakeview Park, it's in my district, it's beautiful, bring some food carts, have a special event, I'm in.
We'll find somebody that wants to have the special event.
There you go, that's...
Okay, any more questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Proposal, now, this is to the recommendation and proposals. Proposal for contest for naming downtown Milton Plaza Abbey.
There is a memo in your packet with a brief outline for how we're proposing to hold a community contest to name the downtown plaza. The plaza advisory team met yesterday, and they added some additional stipulations surrounding the idea for a community naming contest. They would like to add a disclaimer that the city council can reserve the right to reject all proposals. That the downtown plaza advisory team will recommend three options to the common council with a priority ranking, rather than just proposing one option for your consideration. They would like the, for city staff to hold the submitter's name anonymous, and also avoid becoming involved in the discussion of names, so as not to influence the decision based on knowledge of who the, the submitter is. They would like for us to perform a trademark search, and also consult with emergency management staff for availability, in case there were a nine-one-one call, are there other similarly named properties, prior to submitting the three final options to the council. They would also like for us to put boxes at two public buildings in order to accept submissions in another format other than just electronically. They want us to use posters in the downtown to advertise the contest, and they add an additional provision that downtown plaza advisory team members would also be required to donate the chamber gift certificate, as well as city staff and elected officials, as we laid it out in the proposal. And Van Nutt has said that the chamber is willing to donate the hundred-dollar gift certificate, so, thank you to Van. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from the downtown plaza advisory team, so that we can proceed beginning in early January to start announcing the contest.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Next one is again Abbey, update on fundraising for downtown Milton Plaza.
So, we talked about this at finance committee as well, and there's a memo in your packet outlining the information that Mike and I learned during our meeting with the Madison Community Foundation, and also establishing some proposals for the council to be considering when it, in terms of how we want to recognize donors to the plaza project. Our plaza advisory team talked about this extensively yesterday. We do have a retired fundraiser on our team who has a lot of expertise in fundraising, and she helped us come up with kind of four scenarios for how we might want to proceed with fundraising for the plaza project. The first one is no engagement, no donations, and then that scales up significantly to scenario four, which is a full capital campaign, and would require a professional fundraiser and a one-to-one and a half-year timeframe. The plaza advisory team did not make a formal recommendation on which of these four scenarios to proceed with. My recommendation would be that we go with scenario three, where we have a limited timeframe in which we're soliciting donations, we hire a professional fundraiser, and I mentioned this also at finance committee, that I have spoken with an anonymous donor who is potentially interested in considering covering the costs for hiring the professional fundraiser. And then, we would complete the fundraising by opening date of the plaza, which right now is scheduled for somewhere around September of 2019. The recommendation that the plaza advisory team made is that the council should prioritize having the plaza construction stay on current schedule rather than delaying it. The next steps from our perspective are to go ahead and meet with the fundraiser that was recommended by the Madison Community Foundation to determine the feasibility of the timeframe, and also create some realistic fundraising expectations, and then discuss a fee, and we would bring that back to the finance committee and council for your consideration. The downtown plaza advisory team is willing to create a subset of their current committee, which is seven members, that can help to establish fundraising goals and do some of the work that's, that's going to be required with this initiative. In terms of donor recognition, Psyche Design has laid out some really nice options for us to consider. One is that we would look at a centralized location to recognize donors on the north side of the building that houses the, the bandshell as well as the restrooms. So, this is looking from Elmwood Avenue South. We would have the overall name for the plaza, and then we would have three dedicated plaques to recognize donors at different levels. We would recognize the common council members and potentially the, the plaza advisory team around the corner. And we would also have a community posting bullet, bulletin board at the site as well. Another idea to consider is the idea of having some smaller medallions that could recognize donors that sponsor the larger pieces within the plaza, like the bandshell and the public art features as well, and there's an example in the, the middle of what that could look like. I think there, there was a consensus, although no formal recommendation from both staff and the advisory team, that we shouldn't proceed with the buy a brick type of campaign, and that's due to concerns over maintenance and the cost associated with that, as well as a concern that would, it would significantly set back our design timeline. Psyche Design told us that that would be about an additional six months in the design process. So, not looking for any formal action tonight, I just wanted to provide you with an update and let you know how we're planning to proceed, and I would hope to bring something back to you in January.
Thank you, Abby. Next item is number thirty. Stormwater utility ERU rate, consideration of referendum to increase rate.
I will make a motion to increase the rate from fifteen dollars to thirty dollars per year as recommended by the stormwater utility.
Earlier you had forty-five.
To forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just to clarify a little, as I was sitting and listening to, to find my, and it's, I'm not part of the stormwater utility, but I, I happened to be there that, that evening. What they were discussing, and this might kind of answer your question as to the monies, they were looking at the number of different projects that were in estimation, and mostly due to the storm, and the estimation of how much that would cost. And they were kind of figuring that roughly it was going to be three million dollars that they didn't expect would be covered by FEMA. So, then the idea came up, well, how do we, over the next five years, take care of that? And what they came up with, in my recollection, is, and was that they said thirty dollars, which would bring the, the take to...
An increase of thirty.
Increase, no, increase of two-thirty. That was my recollection, I could be remembering that wrong, but I thought that's what it was. Two-thirty.
No, two-forty-five, an increase of thirty dollars.
Oh, okay, well, I could say, I'm, I'm not a member of that, that committee or board. And that would raise, I, I think they were figuring an extra three hundred thousand dollars a year, bringing the total to around six hundred thousand dollars a year, and they figured over five years, that would fund then the three million dollars worth of project. So, that's kind of how that came about.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Now, having said that...
Yeah.
And having, listening to the conversation earlier, I, I think that it's a mistake to take this to referendum this quickly, because I don't think, as Joanna said, it's not spelled out well enough. What, what, what is the public going to get for that increased amount of money? We, we can't just go to somebody and say, we want X amount of dollars, without giving them a clear picture of how we propose to spend that, not only in the next five years, because the stormwater utility board was looking at five years' worth of improvements to get us to where we're going to be. But you've also got to explain to people, okay, are we gonna, you know, otherwise, you're gonna have to sunset it. But what are you gonna do with that increased amount of money? If we do not have this spelled out, then you're, 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 you're shooting yourself in the foot. And I don't, I don't think that it's been fleshed out well enough at stormwater, the stormwater utility board, as to the definition of why and what they're gonna do with that money. I, I...
There's certainly no documentation.
Certainly not. And before you take it, you, you...
Okay, so...
You have to have some kind of idea of what you're gonna...
So, we're not going to use, I guess my question is, we've got a creek corridor that is in big need of repair, citizens agitating to have it repaired, and we won't be able to go to referendum until 2020, April of 2020 at the earliest, to even start collecting the funds to do the repair, if it passes, which means 2021, before we can start working on it.
And I, I, I agree.
That's what...
I understand the issue, and, and I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, but I don't know how you can take a referendum to the, to the public with no definition of what you're gonna do with it. Look what the school does with their referendums, they spend multiple months to, to, you know, define it. So, I, I think you have to...
Well, it's how much of a definition are you looking for? Because before, we didn't have that much of a definition, and it passed by sixty-seven percent. I'm getting a sense you want specific projects and dollar amounts, and that's going to be very hard.
Well, that's my point, is that...
But I think we can look...
Is that you're asking us to triple the funding, right, for something that's only been up and running for a year and a half. There was a consensus that this was the, originally, that this was the appropriate amount of money, and it wouldn't get done in two years, it wouldn't get done in three years, that this was an ongoing issue. And what we had tried to do was say, okay, if we can put this much money and dedicate it to stormwater, then over the next seven to ten years, we will address our major problems. It wasn't that we were trying to get them all done in one or two years.
No, we're not saying that.
But that's what you're saying, is that we have six million dol, you're saying you have, the stormwater utility has identified three million dollars of problems, and you want to get it fixed in five years. The concern I have is, why is five years the appropriate window? Why isn't it ten years? We have a certain amount of money that's coming in, which the stormwater utility has dedicated to the biggest issue, which is restoration of the creek corridor.
And...
Don't know how much money that's gonna cost. We won't know how much money that's gonna cost. We have also at least three hundred thousand dollars that's set up to be dedicated there from eighteen and nineteen funds, and we have FEMA money. So, I don't understand how we can all of a sudden decide that we need three million dollars next year.
We will not bring in...
Okay, please, first Mike, and then Joanna, and then you. Mike?
A couple of months ago, the council approved a contract with Cardinal, which was to be, have a report due by the end of the year identifying costs estimated over a five-year period. And I'm just wondering, excuse me, if we shouldn't defer action on this until the January meeting, where you'll have an opportunity then to review that report and what the estimated costs are, to get to the point you guys are raising.
Okay, Joanna?
So, i, is January okay still with Lori's timeframe, though? To get it onto the referendum for, I mean, to get it on the ballot?
Oh, yeah, what Larry and Lori had said is, by January fifteenth, the council would have to have an action.
We don't have a council meeting until the eighteenth.
But we have to decide tonight if we're going to do the April referendum.
Susan, go ahead.
No, the, the third Tuesday is January fifteenth.
Oh, the fifteenth? Oh, I'm sorry, to the fifteenth on the fifteenth, okay. Okay, so then, can I, I, I think that works for the next meeting? Can I have, refer this for the council decision, so that we actually have some language that we want to propose, so we get it all done in one shot?
Okay, you would like to refer it to the city attorney to get the appropriate...
Yes, but I, I want to see if this, this statement would be appropriate for the referendum. Should the stormwater utility board raise the current stormwater fee from fifteen dollars to forty-five dollars for a five-year period with the fee to return to fifteen dollars in 2024 to fund the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor and other stormwater features that were damaged or delayed by the August 2018 flood?
Yes, that would work.
It tells the story. At least that helps with the public information.
Got all that, Larry?
I can give you this.
Joanna has it written down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, that is what we're trying to do.
Yeah. I know they have to put it in the right language, but that gives the...
Because without doing something like that and increasing the funds, we're having to delay all of what we had previously approved and that had been voted on with the referendum, to divert those funds to repair the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor.
Yeah, I just don't want the stormwater utility board to be the ones to say, we're gonna lower it when we want to. I'd rather have the voters be able to decide that.
Yeah, that would be fine, so that, yeah, giving us five years to get all of this done in terms of repair, I'm very happy with.
Well, I had written down my thoughts, but you have captured most of them, so unless we have a plan, it isn't going to go anywhere. And it's not only the Pheasant Branch Conservancy, there are some other areas which are impacted as well, for example, the ponds, which should be included as well. And, and we should try to get as much as possible... And we should try to get as much as possible that how much FEMA will pay. So I think that would be very important. And we have also applied for grants, and I know that we applied for one grant to do...
DNR?
From DNR, for...
Sorry, county, I believe.
Close to about a million dollars to take care of the areas which were already fixed, about fifteen hundred, about, I don't know, whatever the length is. So we should know that as well when the Cardinal is coming here. And if there's any other sources of funds which will be available or could be used, because there was some remediation grants which we're going to, Mike or anybody, we are going to apply for. I would also like to know, Bill or Mike, that how much we are expecting to get from the remediation grants, because I think we already applied for some, and we plan to apply some more. So I like to get a complete, comprehensive picture at the next meeting. So when we vote, or even before, so that we have that data available. Let me finish, please. So, now, once we have these data together, I guess then we need to have a definitive plan, and I guess I do like that there's, we have put a five-year limit there, so that part I do like here. So, there's a lot more here. I think, you know, people love our conservancy, they love the quality of life, but they need a, and the floods have been devastating, but we need to define what we are asking for and what we'd be giving. Yes, Susan, so.
Okay, what you're saying is, you're trying to get a dollar amount. The stormwater utility will not spend money if we have grant money to cover a cost. We're going to go that way first. And council will be approving all of the funds spent by the stormwater utility. So, those things are not an issue, but we need to be sure we've got enough money from both grants, FEMA, whatever, and the utility to cover these costs. That's why we're asking for the increase.
And I agree with you. Once we have those values, it will help us decide, do we need, should it go to thirty dollars or forty-five dollars? You can't just arbitrarily say, I want forty, why not ninety dollars, or why not twenty dollars? I mean, you got to have some, there has to be some metrics, some data on which you base this. You can't just pull out of the hat and just say, okay, I want this. There has to be some numbers to back it up.
Okay, I will say one thing in answer to that, is go look at the stormwater fees for any of the surrounding municipalities.
And also find out what the...
Forty-five dollars is not even close to what they're charging.
Again, I guess I would just, I hate to repeat this. We need to know what our needs are and where we are spending the money before we go to the taxpayers, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, just a question. You sent around an email from one of your constituents this week on Saturday, from Ms. Kathleen Karen.
Yep.
In two, in a dozen words or so, could you tell, remind the council what the gist of that email was?
Yeah.
Well, I guess they all got it. They are not happy with the, where the taxes are going up. They are not, and we just increased our, could I please finish? So, I know Bill gave me more details of that one. We just raised our utility bill by fifty dollars, and we are trying to add another thirty dollars here. And we think, well, as long as maybe it is just, you know, the cost of their going on a, going to some event at the Overture Center, or they can skip some of their medicine or whatever, but maybe for some people, thirty dollars isn't that much, but there are others, eighty dollars is probably a significant amount. So, that's why, where I come from, and Kathleen, I guess she was very, she had not only the city taxes, all her taxes were going up, and what she said was that her pay at the university wasn't going up quite as much as her taxes were, and she couldn't afford it. And she also had some suggestion that there are some things we could do to help out with some of these things. First Joanna, and then Susan.
So, nowhere in the discussion and your response, instead of just forwarding it to us, was the fact that her valuation probably went up. Because technically, I mean, because I have to tell you, my taxes went down this time.
Mine did too.
Though I paid less this year than I had to pay last year. So, it's not across the board for everyone. It's when their valuation happened, I paid more last year, I didn't pay as much this year. So, it's the taxing districts were all very prudent, and it depends what the value of her house was. So, I think you owe it to that constituent that contacted you to walk her through what happened with her taxes this year.
I do.
It wasn't because of the taxing jurisdictions, it was because her valuation went up.
I plan to meet with her, and I have all the numbers, but, yeah, I'm aware of it, I'm meeting with her in January, yes, Susan.
I want to reiterate what Joanna said, because my taxes went down ten percent.
Well, you two are lucky, I don't know if there are too many people...
Let me finish.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead and finish, so.
It is the evaluation. The other thing is, she also needs to understand that the property tax bill has multiple taxing entities. It's not the city of Middleton determining the school district, M A T C, the county, and the city of Middleton. The only one we are responsible for is the city of Middleton, and that needs to be explained to her.
She mentioned that in her email, if you were to read it, so.
I did read it. It was that all of the entities were going up.
Yes.
She needs to understand that the city of Middleton is not responsible for all of this.
Of course. You're absolutely right. Any other comments, so the motion is...
I just, you know what, I just have to get in on this, because this is so much fun. The reality is...
Emily, you are after...
The city of Middleton taxes have increased every year since I've been on council. The sentiment that this woman was trying to convey is that this body is responsible for trying, at least to some degree, to maintain some common sense in keeping our tax increases to a minimum. And what she was trying to convey was that, in her opinion, that they were not. It is up to us to minimize those tax increases, and she's trying to say that we're not doing a good enough job. And you can pick on Dane County, and you can pick on Madison Technical College, and you can pick on the school board. But the reality is, is that the city of Middleton has not done a good enough job to keep its taxes as low as it should.
I disagree.
I disagree too.
Well, that's okay too, Emily. I think it's good to have a healthy discussion, so.
For the record, my taxes went up.
Yeah, I think we've got two lucky people here, but I don't want to go through that.
I just want to put that out there, because if the media writes that Alder's taxes went down, I just wanted, for the record, mine went up. And I'm thinking that a lot of peoples went up, so we do need to be conscientious when we increase things. We are concerned about the corridor. I know that my people are walking to the conservancy. I know your people are walking to the ponds, your people are walking. Everybody's out there walking, especially once it becomes warm. I do care, I'm looking forward to the write-up, but my taxes went up, and I'm glad that yours went down. But let's be sensible, and let's be thinking of our taxpayers.
And for the record, mayor's taxes also went up, so I'm not complaining, but...
You're with me, thank you.
So, and I agree with what Mark has said. So now, what is the motion here to defer until January fifteenth, right? Did somebody make a motion, or somebody's going to?
I don't believe we have a motion yet.
There's no motion?
Yeah.
I don't believe there was any subsequent motions.
Right, correct, there's a motion by Susan to approve, Kathy Olson seconded it, but no one seconded.
Okay, so...
To defer until the January fifteenth meeting.
Okay, need second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that one?
The only question I have is, do we need to dispose of the first motion?
For all dozens.
Oh, just for all dozens.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed?
Are you moving to Director City Attorney to draft a statement?
I understand that, it's implicit.
Okay.
I listened.
All right.
Okay, is it seven one or six two?
I'm voting no.
Oh, okay, so that's...
Six two.
Six two, okay, all right. And, okay, so we are on to Resolution 2018-63, authorizing the establishment of 2019 emergency medical service pre-schedule.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Committee appointments, confirmation of the mayor's recommendation, point out Dr. Eric Booth to the water sources management commission. This is a great guy, and Dr. Lotta worked to find this one. Is the motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any question or comments? All those in...
Placing someone?
Yeah, he's placing that... Jenny.
Who is he replacing?
Jeanne Foidish.
She, she couldn't, well, meetings were way too long, and she, well, anyway, she wanted to, she left, so. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Motion to adjourn. Well, I wish you, everyone, happy holidays, Merry Christmas.